Start off with commission member roll call.
Larson.
Here.
The group.
Here.
Martin.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Amson.
Here.
Hughes.
Here.
Bright.
Here.
Has everybody had an opportunity to go through this and attend us? Do I have a motion to approve? I'll make that motion. I have a motion by Lawrence. You got a second?
A second.
Second by Christian. Okay, new business discussion. Formal action of proposed zoning text amendment to the Mills County Iowa zoning ordinance. Chapter two, seven, point one, two, solar energy systems. Considerations of adding a corn suitability rating into current regulations. I'm going to read the meeting statement, and these will be the guidelines that we follow. The public hearings will be conducted pursuant to the commission's rules of procedure. We will first hear the report of the department on the detailed information and observations regarding the request before the commission. If not done so in written form prior to the hearing. Next, we will take the testimony of the applicant and his or her witnesses. On completion of the applicant's testimony, I will call upon members of the audience wishing to be heard concerning the request. Persons in favor of the request shall be heard first, followed by those opposed to it. At any time during the presentation testimony, members of the commission may interrupt to ask questions or to make comments on what has been said. Upon completion of all testimony, the applicant will be allowed to make a closing statement to the commission. On commission, upon completion of the applicant's closing statement, I will entertain a motion from the commission to close the public hearing on the request. The commission reserves the right to ask questions of any member of the audience. However, we will not hear any unsolicited statements unless the public hearing is first reopened. Each speaker addressing this commission shall step forward to the podium and state their name and address before proceeding with their testimony or evidence. This commission shall not be bound by strict rules of evidence, but does reserve the right to exclude evidence or testimony that may deem to be irrelevant, immaterial, incompetent, or unduly repetitious. As chairman, I will rule on all questions relating to the admissibility of evidence which may be overruled by a majority of the commission. Innuences made granted by the commission in case for good cause shown to any interested party who has entered their appearance. The commission may request a continuance of a hearing for the purpose of giving further notice, taking further evidence, gathering further information, touring the proposed site, or for such other reasons as a commission may find sufficient. In such case, we shall state the specific reasons for the continuance and set a date, time, and place when the matter will be continued. All official actions of this commission will be made at a public meeting by motion made, seconded, and a polling of the membership. If conditions are imposed, such conditions shall be included in the motion or amendment thereto. Our final decision will be prepared in writing and would be part of the public record of this commission. All right, we're going to, do we have a motion to open public hearings? I like that motion. Got a motion by Lawrence. And we have a second?
A second.
Second, agree. Do you want to take individual roll call? We just go with what? Okay. All those in favor, say aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we will have a presentation of language options by Matt.
On the staff report that we were due on the back, in the staff report, I included the full language in chapter twenty-seven, section twelve of the utility scale folder for you to have an idea of what the current regulations are currently with utility scale solar. And that would be the part that we're would be looking at in putting the CSR rating portion to that. And so when we originally asked about this, we looked at what other Iowa counties out there. We didn't try to develop any new language, local languages. The wording that is in the staff report there comes directly from either Cedar County or Sioux County out there. And we would have to, the first thing we'd have to do is add a definition for corn suitability rating. And have that down currently right now as an index that rates soil types for the potential row crop productivity. And then the two different, the two counties had stated in various ways. There was A, and then there was B. And so the SESUS, which is utility solar, shall not be installed on land unless the land has an average CR CSR two rating of, and I left that open for consideration of the commission. And again, I put in there, currently Iowa counties, the ones that utilize this out there having a new source of reach of forty to seventy-five or lower. Average of the CSR two will be calculated using current data supplied by the United States Department of Agricultural Natural Resource Conservation Service. The area of interest established for calculating the CSR two must reflect the precise and contiguous land area being developed with arrays, buildings, and utility and access infrastructure, and shall not include land set aside for conservation agriculture or land otherwise undisturbed by the development. And then B, the other choice would be at least seventy-five percent of the site has a CRS two rating of blank or below, and has no history of agricultural use in the previous five and eight of the last ten years. So those would be considerations that if the planning commission can either make a recommendation for one or the other, and/or if you've reviewed the ordinances ahead of time and are happy where they're at, you really have those three options. You can either choose to move in favor, or to support a series of recommendation of approval, or you can have a choice of recommending that and stay where you're at.
All right, we will. Everybody's heard that, and then we're going to go into public comment. I'm going to ask, I suppose, the people that are for this. I will call you up first, one at a time. I would ask, keep it at three minimum, three minute maximum, one time to the podium. So I'll open it up now. Let's start with anybody that's for.
For the amendment.
Go ahead. Come on up. Give us your name and your.
Brett Hayes. Six, four, nine, five, three hundred and tenth Street, Malvern. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to speak with you. My name is Brett Hayes, and I'm a fourth generation farmer south of Mal. I am standing up in support of the CSR two ordinance. Agriculture is the backbone of this county. It is the number one GDP in our state, and it touches almost every other industry in the country. My fear is that if we allow subsidized solar projects, it will drive the price of land up and make it even tougher for future generations to come back to the family farm. As family farmers, our ultimate goal is to be able to pass our operations on to future generations. I have a young man that is marrying my oldest daughter, who wants to join in our operation. But I'm afraid of how difficult it would be for him to acquire more land. It's already tough enough to outbid outside investors when you are trying to purchase a piece of land. If you were to pay twelve thousand dollars an acre for a farm, and someone says that they will give you fourteen hundred dollars an acre lease per year, that is twelve percent return on your money. If you were to cash rent the same farm, you might get three percent return on your money, but that money stays right here in the county. We should not have to be competing with our own tax dollars to do what we love. A previous county board in the past already made the mistake of selling a landfill to out of county investor that now receives garbage from at least three states. I'm not sure how many of you have traveled this county today and see the garbage on the side of the roads, but it is sickening. The landfill has become the first big eyesore in the county, and I beg of you to not allow the second one with solar panels. Before I close, I would like you at all to think about a beautiful sunny summer afternoon. You're driving across the county. The wind is waving the fields of corn and soybeans like an ocean of dark green that produces food, fuel, and fiber for our bodies. Now think of those same fields covered in black solar panels with gravel and weeds around them. I know which one I'd rather see. I've seen fields of solar panels, and it's not pretty. As it says in the great American song, "America the Beautiful," amber waves of grain. Both Richard Crouch and Jack Sayers have already told me personally that they support it. I would appreciate your support for the ordinance as well.
Yes.
I'm Rob Hayes, six, five, six, two, nine, three hundred and tenth Street, Malvern, Iowa. And I'm his father. And as a fair-sized farmer and taxpayer in the county, I am concerned about the use of farm ground for wrong reasons. For sustainable agriculture to thrive, it must both be environmentally sound and economically viable. By focusing on cost effectiveness, farmers can ensure that their practices are sustainable in the long run, benefiting the environment, society, and their own livelihoods. With the right support and market conditions, sustainable agriculture can become the standard for food and energy production worldwide. To sustain agriculture in this county, we must not compete with outside investors who purchase land at above-market prices to lease to energy companies for electricity. Our companies would invest heavily without government, with government incentive, without government incentives to make it cost-effective. Crop protection is key to achieving energy independence through renewable resources. Solar grids need periodic replacement, whereas crop production is renewable annually. Agriculture must keep growing to maintain profitability as costs rise. As a producer, if I do not continue to grow, I feel I will be going backward. But as, but I have to be able to grow profitably. Given the input costs, machinery costs, and repair expenses, without growth, I will be going backward. It is crucial that tax dollars do not fund energy companies through incentives, creating unfair competition. Therefore, I am endorsing this ordinance. Thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak?
I'm third in row. I feel I have to go next, you know?
Well, there you go.
I know Mr. Hughes is a little hard of hearing, so I'm hoping everyone can hear me. And Lonnie, can you hear me okay?
My name's Tom Honeyman. I live about as far east in the county as you can get, a mile west of Emerson, fifty-nine, seven, forty-four, four hundred Street. I usually have a scripted item that I could hand to you that you could read, but my thoughts are all over the board on this, and it's finally settled down to I am in support of this ordinance change, but in reality, it's almost like putting a bandage on a bleeding wound. You've quoted twenty-seven of the Mills County code. If you go down to twenty-seven, three agriculture use and types in agricultural zone, it goes horticulture, crop production, animal production, and livestock sales. And it doesn't say anywhere in there about solar industrial parks. Nowhere. As far as I know, that's Mills County code, which is a fancy name for law. So when mid-America purchases that farm, and the owners perfectly, I support the fact that you can sell your farm and do whatever you want to. But the reason, as you know, we have zoning is so the rest of us can go to sleep at night comfortably, knowing that there's not going to be a battleship erected next to us the next day. Otherwise, my son and I are getting ready to apply for a variance to build a hog confinement three blocks north of the Glenwood State Bay. And I'm pretty sure it'll be turned down, which is exactly what should have happened in the Board of Adjustment. They should have looked at him and said, you, you're welcome to buy that farm, but you're going to farm it. Jim Gregory, a good friend of mine, has been farming, and he does an excellent job, and he's going to farm it again. This is all a, the windmills, the solar farms, the Summit Carbon Pipeline, all it is is a draft off of federal funds, which is your money. So basically, and it's a dollar per dollar in forty-five Q, every dollar they spend, they're going to get it back. So it isn't going to cost them a dime, but they're going to make a lot of money exporting that electricity. None of my neighbors that went to the Board of Adjustment, it didn't make any, any difference. They were ignored. I was unable to go because of a family emergency, but I asked every one of them, and they, and they said they were ignored. They went ahead and unanimously voted to do it. Why? Zoning is in place for a reason. You have the northwest corner of the county is red for industry. Am I not right? And there's a little spot over north of me that's the booster station. The rest of it is solid green. So, thank you, Matt. I am in favor of this change. I would put the CSR at thirty if it was me. I'd put it very low, but I don't see why you can't just say, we're not interested in this. I mean, you're welcome to build one, but not in agriculturally zoned land. Thank you.
Anybody else on the pro side?
Hello, my name is Stephanie Miller, five, eight, two, five, eight, three hundred and ninetieth Street, Emerson. I just want to let you know, when these ordinance were created, you know, everyone thought, great job, wonderful, and it was well done. But please do not take offense that we need amendments. I believe ordinances are growing, ever-growing, ever-changing, ever-evolving. So I'm very, I believe this is a very good thing to amend this ordinance. Now that we see that business is willing to take very fertile farm ground, ground that grows food. It's what we do. And they're willing to change that and turn it into something that we don't know how it's going to affect, affect the land. It hasn't been around at this size long enough. So as we know better, we do better, and that's, that's life. So I would very much appreciate you backing the changes.
Anything else on the pro side?
Jack Sayers, six oh seventy, ninth street, Malvern, Iowa. I serve on the Mills County Board of Supervisors and am a proud resident of the eastern half of our community. My family has farmed in Mills County for seventy years, ever since my great-grandparents moved from Marengo to the farm where they spent the majority of their lives. Agriculture is literally in my blood. Although I am a Republican, I believe that the duty of the Planning and Zoning Commission is to look after the best interests of our community. That's why we have zoning and ordinances in the first place. In my opinion, there is no better way to preserve the heartbeat of our local economy than protect our most productive farm ground. In our ordinances already, things that you folks have approved, we have an ordinance that sets a six-foot distance requirement for adult entertainers and crowds at the playhouse. We have an ordinance that says wind turbines must be smaller than eighty feet so that we can protect the visual landscape of our community. We have an ordinance that states how many parking spaces a lot must have depending on the building. There are many more ordinances in our one hundred and sixty-two page zoning book, and the majority of them all have to do with private property. If we can create these ordinances for the common good of our community, I do not see a reason why we would not implement a CSR standard into our solar ordinance to protect local ag. Placing industrial-sized solar projects is, quite frankly, does as much good as putting screen doors on submarines. It just doesn't make sense. I had a meeting with a gentleman who was on the fence about this new ordinance just yesterday. He owns roughly eighty acres behind his home and was asking me about why he should not be allowed to sell his farm for solar. I asked him, if you combine the amount of people who receive a wage from that land, seed dealers, custom applicators with chemicals, et cetera, et cetera, how many people is it? He then told me that in total, six people receive a paycheck from his eighty acres. The facts are twenty-one percent of residents in our community, people who vote for me, are employed in agriculture. There are over six hundred and twenty-three million dollars worth of sales every year, and that number's going up. And there is seventy-seven million dollars worth of wages from agriculture every year to our community. Agriculture is the heartbeat of our community, and we must pass this ordinance to protect it. As a young guy, it's already hard enough to get into agriculture. We got rising costs, rising input costs, rising machinery costs, rising land costs. Simple supply-side economics tells us that with less land available for agriculture, the price of land is going to go up. That's not beneficial to people in my generation who need to farm to feed the world. In closing, I want to emphasize that my comments is not about being against renewable energy. It's about being responsible for land use and preserving the foundation of our local economy. Our farmers, ag workers, and rural families depend on this land, not only for their livelihood, but their way of life. I urge this commission to consider the facts, the local impact, and the responsibility we all share. Let's not trade short-term gain for long-term loss. Let's protect what makes our community strong. Thank you very much.
Else on pro side?
Cambridge, two oh seven, three Barris Road, Bywood. I'm not a farmer, but I bought a farm in Mills County over fifty years ago. Piece of ground that should never have been farmed. Gullies and erosion. We spent the last fifty years correcting that because we like to look at it. But I'm in favor of this, and I think you are too. Over less than a year ago, you considered an amendment to the future land use plan for Mills County. One of those policies was to maintain agriculture and open space as the dominant land use type in other unincorporated Mills County. So I'm in favor of this ordinance, make it as strict as possible, because I think solar panels will be outdated, obsolete in a short period of time. And I've seen other industries come to Mills County and other places, and when it's no longer viable, the owner walks away and leaves it. Now, there is something in the ordinance to prevent that, but a big firm that owns twenty or more windmill sites and solar panels walks away, just like Northwestern Bell did, from their facilities scattered around the county, which nobody will take responsibility. It'll be an ugly sight. So I hope you will support this ordinance as strong as possible.
Anybody else on the pro side like to speak? Okay, we're going to go to anybody that would like to speak on the other side. Is there anybody that would like to get up and make any comments?
Lori Green, and I live at one, seven, eight, eight, nine Ellis Road. And we are like two miles south of Highway three seventy. And ours is a heritage farm. It's a four-hundred-acre farm that was passed down to my husband and his brothers by their grandfather Stacy Fahey. And he was a very determined, very hard-working, salt-of-the-earth type of farmer, as probably many of you all are here in this room today. But he really had an unflinching work ethic and a healthy dose of optimism, always wanting to provide for his family independently. And so this land has been lovingly farmed across generations by our family and remains one of our family's most cherished legacies. Today, however, we face unprecedented challenges as farmers and are concerned with the proposed ordinances to limit solar development on our land if it has a specific CRS two rating. This proposed restriction, while we realize is very well-intentioned, and we certainly understand that, but it would effectively prevent us from pursuing a solar lease agreement that offers us a vital financial lifeline. Our current farmer is experiencing unsustainable costs and year-after-year losses, and he's not alone. The recent two hundred and twenty-five Senate Agricultural Committee hearings reported that producers of crops such as corn, soybeans, and wheat are grappling with per-acre losses over consecutive years. And this appears to be continued on in the next unforeseeable future. And this jeopardizes the economic stability of our rural communities across the nation. Rising costs, as Jack said, for fertilizer, seed, fuel, equipment maintenance, labor shortages, unpredictable weather patterns, sustained droughts, floods, market volatility, volatility tariffs, and reciprocal tariffs have converged into what we can only describe as a crisis for our farm. And it appears these troubling events are going to continue. They're not going to go away anytime soon. So in addition, potential farmers, whether they're young, middle-aged, or old, really are apprehensive about farming our farm because we have looked. Without crop insurance, paying our property taxes and other bills will be, come increasingly difficult. The opportunity to lease part of our land for solar energy is not a decision we take lightly. I just did want to say that the concern that solar development will price out young farmers is certainly understandable, but we have looked. There are no young farmers interested in farming our farm. So we respectively ask you to consider the real-world impact this ordinance is going to have on long-term family farms such as ours. Please allow us to have a choice in this matter, and we thank you for the time that you take to make wise decisions. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michael Koenig. I address two ninety-eight Silver King Court in Glenwood Springs, Colorado. I'm the Senior Director of Development for Orion Renewable Energy Group. We have the Folsom Lake Solar Project that we're currently working on. One of my colleagues, Sazi Goli, is generally spending his time in the county. He's actually on vacation this week and passes on his apologies for not being able to be here. We have a project that we've been working on for a number of years now. We have about fifty-six hundred acres that's participating. We're generally bounded by south of the Walter Scott Plant, Interstate twenty-nine to the west. There's a few parcels on the east, generally between the interstate and the Missouri River. We have about twenty-eight participating agreements in the project to date, and we're looking at approximately a five hundred megawatt project. We have about twenty-eight participating agreements in the project to date, and we're looking at approximately a five hundred megawatt project. Out to we against the change to the ordinance, we believe that you've spent the time and the effort coming up with. Ordinance historically that has both protections for the county. Landholders that are neighboring to the project and then neighbors of landholders who want to participate in the project. I think some of the decommissioning provisions that are included, both in the ordinance and also in our own private agreements with landholders. Hopefully should cover some of the concerns that we have bonds in place that are governed outside of the project. So the decommissioning and removal of the project can take place. We selected the site specifically because it is in a flood prone area. The site itself has a lower CSR rating than the county average. It is flood prone. We know where we are. We know that there is a flood risk. Some of the landholders who I think are present tonight have voiced their opinion that it is difficult to farm with insurance. The increasing costs and whilst the CSR is one number. The flood risk, if the river is high, the water is damaging property. Also, this would be if we have a five hundred megawatt project currently proposed. With current prices, that's a nine hundred and forty million dollar project that we would wanna spend money in the county. For that, there's approximately twenty-three million dollars in property taxes paid across the life of a thirty-five year solar lifespan. And above and beyond that, the solar project would enter into a voluntary economic development agreement with the county. In the range of about one point five million dollars per year, depending on the final size. So if it's about five hundred megawatts. That one point five million dollar number. And for that, we would have. Payments to neighboring residents within a third of the mile of the project who did not wanna participate. We believe that. We can share the financial benefit through there and then entering into an agreement, whether it's the county itself or through economic development agencies. Within the county to have the project to provide funds to the county to go to the broader needs. And we realize we are part of the community. We have landholders as business partners. And we believe that the county should reap the benefits of the project as a whole. As it stands, option B in the proposed language is essentially a moratorium for our project. Everything out there is farmed. If B were to be imposed, that would just stop all the development. Happy to answer any questions that might come up later. Take your few time.
Anybody else like to speak?
Matt Rock, two hundred tenth Street, Glenwood, Iowa. Family and I moved here just a couple of years ago. Lovely county. I'm opposed to this ordinance, not by the essence of wanting to regulate solar farms in the city, but in the county. But just because it seems overly intense and they prevent any sort of. It seems like it removes individual choice, being so stark there. If a farmer wants to use their land for solar, I don't understand. It's an aesthetic concern. I grew up surrounded by cornfields as well, and I gotta say, I like them, but that's just because I grew up around. If I had grown up with one quarter of the land being solar panels, I'd probably think solar panels were pretty too. I think that's merely an adaptation of our own part. One thing that's confused me that's been brought up is the danger of solar panels, whether or not it's gonna render the land unusable or. It's glass and aluminum. They're fairly easy to remove. They're really easy to take, and I don't think they have any danger. There are counties nearby that have very reasonable regulations about that, though. They require groundwater testing before and after the project. I also see in Page County next to us has wildflower native requirements that I think are very intelligent. I would also close, like many Glenwoodians, I drive up and down Act twenty-nine at least several times a week. And I see Vanderhags there, that's those mobile solar panel arrangements. I don't know if you've ever seen those. They follow the sun in the morning, they go across the day. And then just beyond that, we have literal hills of slag from the coal. They've covered them up with dirt and plastic, but they're building new ones all the time. When it comes to the difference there, I would rather have an higher I twenty-nine lined by Vanderhags as opposed to including Western and. Oh, I have.
Nicole Rock, two hundred tenth Street, Glenwood, Iowa. My husband. So I oppose the current. Central ordinance in large part because I believe that the best person to ask for how to use the land is the farmer of each land. They've been many times doing it for generations, and they are thinking about the generations ahead and. They can look at their own financial risks and all the things that go into these leases. And I believe that they should be trusted to make these decisions on their own and that we shouldn't be limiting them. Based off of fear by some of us who have never farmed. I have driven past solar fields. Many of them are gorgeous, honestly. They're surrounded by. Grass and flowers, often native. There's a little extra native wildlife. Wildlife in turn, especially pollinators, can then also help the nearby agricultural land. They help to pollinate plants and create better production. And I think that there is, that they can work together very nicely in that sense. I also think it's important to point out that it is understandable. People are worried about losing jobs. To agriculture, which is just a difficulty of the times moving ahead. Job insecurity is always something to be aware of. But this is something that really also helps create jobs. They're very different jobs, but I think that they are jobs that will help lead us into the future. I think that as we're having more difficult time, you know, even trying to sell land for coal and oil because it's just not. As accessible as it used to be, clean energy is gonna be a big foundation and that creating these jobs will help in that area. We got something else, I'm sorry. That was it. Thank you so much.
Jeff Green, seventeen seven one five Alice Road. And Uncle here. We have a century farm. Our family moved here in the eighteen fifties. Our great grandfather bought and deserted land. No one else wanted it. He was a hard worker. Land adjacent to our family farm, I bought that. And it was an emotional decision because we're committed to agriculture. It was a good business decision, but I'm glad I bought the land. But and. We're active in no-till practices, regenerative farming, because I think farms are our future, and I agree. That it's important to help preserve the agricultural industry. And it's interesting, if you look, you know, Iowa was the sixth largest state for apples. Mills County was the largest apple producer at the turn of the last century. They had a big apple festival here. Not anymore. Times change, the world adapts, and so we need to be able to have have a flexibility. I do want to preserve agriculture. One of the things that really attracted me to the solar farm. Is the idea that forty years from now, get the land back, it's gonna be taken care of. Grasses, more organic, more carbon in the soil. We're gonna have pollinators there. And so again, it kind of puts the farm into a stasis box. What I hand out here is, I think, you look beyond CSR two. CSR two is originally intended as a way to compare different parts of the land, but you need to look at what is going on locally. Map there is the USDA Risk Management Association has labeled the ground as high risk. And what that means is your insurance prices go up and and your your coverage goes down. And so our annual production history was about a little over two hundred bushels an acre. When you get moved to a higher risk and it changes every year, it keeps going higher AA, BB, CC. Our APH is reset to a hundred and thirty-nine bushes. So you have more insurance coverage, less less protection. So again, the USDA is saying, hey, we don't want your farmer here. The area here. Specifically is is ideal for a. Solar farm. We don't even have any neighbors to the west, and we have very flat land, don't have many people living there because it's not a good place to live. Other thing with CSR two is it doesn't take into account the actual drainage. Looks at the drainage of the soil type. But if the water can't leave the field, which it can't do in our ground when the river's high, and it can be high for weeks, you've lost your crop. And so it's not uncommon to lose crops year after year. And again, that's why the USDA is is saying, hey, we don't want your farmer here. I encourage the board not to adopt the. CSR two limits. If you do, I would go with a very high, if your purpose is to preserve agriculture, save the best ground. But we need to look at what's good for the whole county. As I mentioned, there's a lot of investment here. We need electricity to move forward. And I, again, I appreciate your services as a. As a board member, try and look out for the interest of the county. I encourage you to look out for the interests of all the county today and in the future. Thank you.
I'm not gonna actually speak in favor or opposed. You didn't give me that option as criteria. You guys know me, I've been been an avid part of the planning process. I'm only here today to ask a question. If we're gonna regulate the land that we develop for solar. Are we gonna regulate the land we developed for anything else? That to me was the biggest question that hit my mind when the idea first came up. We, I was part of the process of updating the land use development plan. And one of the things we decided on was a pretty good amount of residential development. We can apply the same rules to that. Are we going to only apply it to solar? I'm not saying you shouldn't. You guys are entrusted with that responsibility to kind of make a decision that's in the best interest of the county and its residents. But it was a question that I had, so I thought I'd get up today, mention it. Something maybe to consider as you look at what are the options. So, thank you. I'll keep it short.
Dan Robbins, one eight five one nine Alice Road. I am a generational farmer kid. Not, there's one thing I learned a long time ago. It's hard work being a farmer. And it was always the landowners that had all the money and all the fun and all the toys. I grew up very poor. My family lost all their farm from Nebraska, so I made a point that I'm going to not let that happen. I acquired all the in-laws farm. It's mine. Shouldn't have anybody telling me what I can and can't do with my. Contrary to belief in here, I don't think, especially with the project we have going on, that it's a lot of. Outside influence or investors purchasing ground. Most of the people that I know all here around our project own the ground. And. So it it means generational wealth for my family, my kids, who I'm putting through college right now. And forty years down the road, they have the option to keep that farm. Continue to have supplemental income. It's gonna be very important for them as things get harder and harder. In this country for to make ends meet. So. If, here's contradiction here, you know, I'm in sales, so let's negotiate. Is it okay if we can't have generational wealth and you wanna use the CSR to. Keep solar projects out, can we ask the farmers to pay more rent based on CSR? And substantially, because right now the farmers are the ones making all the money and landowners are. I don't make enough money, but to make the mortgage payment and my property taxes. So there's gotta be some give and take. Can't be all or none. Okay, thank you.
Sam Ronshaw, thirty-three, forty-two, Merewell, the lowest land in Iowa. I don't live here, but I do represent about twenty-seven to thirty-two. Counties population. I'm a business manager for Labor's eleven forty, right at Omaha, Nebraska. We cover the entire state of Nebraska, nine counties in Iowa, with Mills being one of them. We've got a solar farm, wind farm going on right there in Shenandoah, Iowa. We've got thirty-six labors right now, making thirty-one dollars and eighty-six cents an hour. For every hour they work, the contractor pays eight dollars and seventy-five cents into health and welfare. Once they reach five hundred hours, it's free health insurance for their entire family. Anything over a hundred hours a month is put in the bank. So with this one project that we're doing in Shenandoah, these guys will have insurance for their entire family for at least up to a year. They're working sixty hours a week, bringing home fifteen to two hundred, fifteen to two thousand dollars a week to feed their family. Am I against this? Yes. Am I against it for our members? Yes. If I wanna do something with my land, why can't I do it? Who's to say what I can't keep with my land? I've heard a lot of people, I've been to like fifty-two counties here in Nebraska. At a night, Iowa, ninety-nine counties we have here, there's what, two that have a moratorium like this? The other ninety-seven are doing something right. You know, I just ask you, don't put this in, this burden on the landowners and let them do it. Thank you.
Any else like to speak?
My name is Rick Frost. I live on one seven four oh two Alice Road, Northwest Mills County. I'm a fourth generation farmer in Northwest Mills. Thought long and hard about whether to lease my land for solar panels. It provides me an option for retirement while keeping ownership of the land in my family. The area is in a flood plain and had suffered several flooding events in the last thirty-nine years that I've been farming in this area. Now we are dealing with lower proven yields. Higher insurance premiums and higher drainage taxes. If solar is going to be a part of the future, I feel that solar should be placed on high risk land. Instead of the more productive areas by.
I'm Evan Seek. I live at the junction of one hundred ninety-fifth and Alice Road. I am also a fourth generation farmer. When my dad and my uncle started signing up acres with Orion, I at first was initially very upset. As a young guy, I think I can say that in this room. I wanted to farm. I thought that that's all I wanted to do with my life. Then I had two kids and. Sorry. When I look ahead. And you look around in the corner, soybeans, yes. You wanna preserve what's naturally beautiful and pure in this county. But if we do not have diverse and varied industry, this county is gonna die. You talk about the young people that you wanna have involved in agriculture. Where are they, Jack? So I'm with a lot of the people that say, as landowners, if we have a chance at profitability and we have a chance at. Making a living for ourselves and the future generations, we have to open up and allow different industries into this county. Thank you.
I guess then that puts us to. Do we have a motion to close public hearings? Thank you. Second. All those in favor say aye. I all opposed, same sign. Now we're going to go into board discussion, formal action.
I honestly, myself, I'm going to sit here and I. I think, thank you for everybody that's. Both sides, that's pretty impressive. Heard everything you said. I can honestly say right now, I'm sitting here. I haven't had, I haven't heard enough to. I haven't heard enough to make a decision, I know that. I think we need to possibly. We need, we need to have some discussion amongst ourselves, maybe a little more education. On what's going on.
Yeah, I think that's somewhat of an issue. You know, normally in these zoning meetings, you come in here and. Potentially the board of supervisors could direct us to discuss potentially maybe about talking about. Putting a CSR rating into into our ordinance. I am firmly against it. I don't think it should even come close to coming in our ordinance. I don't think the CSR rating has. Anything to do with our zoning book. I think if you know, I deal with the CSR rating on a daily basis. It changes by the year. People don't realize that. Two thousand twelve, it had a major change. It had changes in eight of the last twelve years. That CSR rating changes. And I would tell you that raise your hand in here if you knew that. It it it's a moving target. So if we put a CSR rating in our book, there might be a piece of property that. Now it's not, now it's not, now it is. I think it's a, I don't, I don't think it's for zoning book. Now you talk about counties that have it, Sioux County. Sioux County has an average CSR of eighty-five. I mean, it's, it's, it's a different animal than Mills County. Mills County has. All different, geography all the way through. You've got a lot of, when I see a lot of. Bottom farmers and then you've got some no farmers over here so that, that they have differences of opinions. But the key, in my opinion, the key to this whole discussion is choice. This is a eighteen-month process that we put this solar ordinance in. Where were you guys then? We set up here for eighteen months working on this and now all of a sudden, we've got some people talking to us saying, hey, why don't we change it? Well, why didn't, where were you at when we were doing the eighteen-month solar ordinance? It was public hearings. I mean, it went on forever. So we had, when we finally put this ordinance in. We did everything we could to try to make it towards that. Now, if, if, you know, we have a supervisor or two that says, maybe we should change this, I guess. We can sure look at it, but for, for, for this to get jammed down our throat, here it is, vote today. We, we haven't even worked on.
Yeah, that's not even.
Yeah, it's not, it's not right. It, it, it isn't how it should have been done, in my opinion. You know, I, I'm, I'm friends with everybody in here, but I will say this, this isn't how it should have been approached. So we should be work sessions and, and try to figure it out. And I know you can't make everybody happy in here, but I do think. I am, you know, choice was brought up in, in, in a couple of times today and it, and you should be able to kind of, you know, we've already. We've already dictated with our solar ordinance where it can be on this map. We've done that. So now we're wanting to add more to it to say, and now your CSR rating has to be a certain number for. We've had two companies in Mills County. Just a hair under twenty million dollars invested in this, in this county in the last eighteen months because of, because of our solar. Name somebody else that's invested, come to our county and invested twenty million in our county in the last eighteen months. I mean, it's like, whoa, look, this, this ordinance must kind of worked. It looks like people are looking at it. And, and everybody should be proud of the ordinance that was put together, I think. I mean, there was a lot of time put on. So I'm, I'm good for now, but that's my take from that.
I think we talk about choice. We have a wind ordinance in. That's telling people what they can and cannot do with their land. I don't see how this is any different. My opinion. I'm a fifth generation farmer. My family's been here for a hundred and thirty-five years. I mean, to protect our productive farmland. If we talk about twenty million dollars in investment coming in. You look at the economic impact of agriculture in Mills County. Six hundred twenty-three million dollars in total ag sales, seventy-seven million wages. We employ twenty-one percent of our residents through agriculture. It is our, it is the backbone of our economy. It is the heartbeat of our local communities. It should not be threatened. It is threatened enough the way it is. You look at commodity prices right now. Some of our best ground may not pencil this year. So we need more outside competition from solar and absentee landowners. We're just trying to turn a dollar. There's comments made about farmers aren't making, or farmers are making all the money, landowners are not. I do not see that. You talk about, you know, there's, they talked about a need for electricity, a need for energy. There's no future without food. Agriculture needs to be protected. I'm not against renewable energy. We have a ninety-by-one-fifty steel frame shop. That is a perfect canage to put solar panels on the roof. Have independent energy on a small scale at individuals' properties, but solar panels on roofs, on buildings. But large-scale industrial projects where we will not see the energy will be sold on the grid to outside entities. That's giving us no benefit in exchange for our economic powerhouse in agriculture. It's not a fair trade-off. And yet, you know. I've got a farm here, my family farms. Thirty-five and a half percent of that farm. Is a CSR of twenty-five to forty-one. You know, that's poor productivity by CSR standards. By the soil map here. Twenty twenty-one, average yield, two hundred and sixty-eight bushels per acre. Twenty twenty-two, two hundred and thirty-nine bushels per acre. Twenty twenty-three, two hundred and twenty-three bushels per acre. Twenty twenty-four, two hundred and fifty-three bushels per acre. With proper management, you can make lower CSR ground produce. With proper drainage, you can make it produce. And yes, I understand the argument, the bottom ground that sits wet, the water table's high, it may not be an option. But you can look at putting into CRP. We have land, we don't farm, because it's not profitable. We put into CRP. You get a payment from the government and it's, it's competitive with cash rent. It's the same as you'll get if you rent the farm out to somebody. So the argument that there's no young farmers to farm my farm, you put into CRP, you get that same amount of money or more than farmers are willing to pay. I for one am a young farmer. I'm looking for land. This lower CSR ground is what gives younger farmers an opportunity. It needs to be protected. It's the backbone of our economy here locally. Solar has no place in Mills County on a large scale if it is going to disrupt. Our local economy and agriculture. Not against solar, but it should be smaller projects. Independent, you get that energy to your own home, you're benefiting from it. It's not a large-scale project taking, you know, eighty CSR ground out of production, some of the best dirt in the world. You know, five miles south of me along thirty-four, four hundred acres, gone, out of production. For what? We're not going to see the energy. It's going to go on the grid, it's not going to benefit us. When we talk about the tax revenue, you gotta look at tax revenue that goes throughout the county from farmers, from agriculture. Like I said. Employers twenty percent of the residents, seventy-seven million wages, six hundred twenty-three million dollars in total ag sales. That cannot be overlooked and we're looking at this ordinance. That's my opinion on it.
Yeah, and I think there's a little bit of correlation between CRP and solar. If you think about it, you're setting it set aside. I mean, are you against CRP?
I'm not, no. But when you look at solar, CRP is grass, you're sequestering carbon, same as you're sequestering carbon with our modern ag tracts. We do no-till, we do cover crops. Let's talk about the environment. Farmers are the original environmentalists. We are doing everything we can. To make the best use of our ground and make it more productive, to be viable for future generations. We're not harming the soil. So to bring solar in, you look at the compaction on the ground, the stripping of topsoil. Yes, you put it back, but look at a rock quarry. You strip the soil away and they replace it, you know, the decommissioning plan, that farm is never the same. It tanks the productivity of that piece of ground. So to say there's no effect on the farmland. I don't believe in that. You look at compaction, removing topsoil, I mean. To say that there's no effect on the ground, it's the same as just planting native grasses and it's all going to be fine. It's not accurate. Sure, you put grass underneath it, but after what damage has been done?
Anybody else that have any comment?
Yeah, I, I'm with you. I would just like more information. Right, I hear that six hundred and twenty-one million dollars for whatever, but I would honestly like to know how much of that actually stays. How much of that flies out the window to seed sales out of Mills County? Fertilizer sales out of Mills County, fuel costs that come from somewhere out of Mills County. Like everyone's throwing that number around like that money all stays right here. I don't believe that that impact is, is true. I think that money's spent out of Mills County, but I don't think it stays here.
I would like personally to have more information also and also about. The counties, all the other counties in Iowa that aren't doing this, why and why not? So. You know, like I agree, it's a different breed up there, so.
You gotta be within the grid. Hard, that'd be a certain distance from the grid to tie into the grid, to take that energy and move it. So we can all benefit from lower electric costs. It does impact everybody in here. Rain. Energy, all that stuff is going to help everybody in the whole county. Sorry, not to create argument, but I hear from a landowner's perspective. And one, I, I didn't get invited to any of these public meetings before this. Otherwise, I would have showed up and voiced my opinion. And argued some of these points. But again, I hear the agenda of farmers protecting their income. And their way of life. I'm a farmer too. Okay. All right, appreciate it.
What I'm kind of hearing from everybody is, is. Think they're like me, they would like to maybe soak some of this in a little bit. And have some discussion, maybe some education on some things. And. I don't think there'll be any formal motion tonight.
I might do something next, maybe potentially. Yeah, just to talk this through a little bit. So Matt, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions. Okay. If. Basically, what I, I would like to work on here is. I guess, simple enough is, I'd like to make a motion to make sure the CSR two isn't in our solar.
We have a motion. By Hughes, do we have a second? Second.
I can't make a decision without even knowing what CSR. Two numbers are. I don't have a table. I don't have definitions.
Information on that. So, affordability rating index was created in the nineteen seventies at Iowa State University. I'm sorry.
I can second it. Can not add.
Not add.
Second, you can have more discussion over what your motion was.
Yeah, so basically, again, I'll reiterate this is, I just don't think the CSR two rating is for our zoning. I just don't think that's, I think it's a moving target. I think it's a, it's a number that is going to be debatable forever. Now, if the board of supervisors would like to direct us on looking at different areas of the county where this is potentially. Allowed and not allowed, I guess, I think there's a little bit of a divide here where you see, you see different. Different, some people that farm the bottom and some people farm the hills. I think you see that. I just think you have a really heck of a time trying to figure out CSR number. I, I was, I was in a. I sold a piece of property in Hampton, Iowa, and I called up, I called up the. The zoning department, talked to them about selling a piece of property that was split on a forty-acre piece and. And the zoning official said, well, what's the CSR rating? I was like, why does that happen? Well, if, if it's in this county and if it's over a seventy CSR, you can't split it. You can only have forty-acre parcels. So once it starts getting inducted into our book, I could see it migrating through our book. And I just, I think it's, I think it's bad, isn't it? I don't think, I don't think it has any spot in our zone. If you want to, if you, if you, if we want to have another meeting in the future about locations and places and spots, they get. Be discussed. I just think the CSR rating should not be put in our ordinance, period. I would have a lot of knowledge about CSR. Matter of fact, we'll bring up another thing. This year recently, there was a rock quarry approved north on Highway fifty-nine north of Emerson. That farm's a seventy-seven CSR. Guess what? Can you do a rock quarry on CSR on a certain number? I mean, that, it's like, you start, it just, it's just going to fester through this whole thing. It's not the right way to go. In my opinion, of course.
I kind of, I get that, I guess, and, and I see both sides. I just. I don't, I might have a spot where I would want to make a decision either way tonight. I think we, and I, and I give.
Yeah, but we have a motion and a second on the floor.
I'm going to put the rest of this together.
Will we take a vote?
If you don't feel it's going for, whoever is on comment on it, then yeah, if you take a vote.
Well, I guess, so we'll come in. We've got a motion to not put CSR rating into the ordinance. We have a second. All those in favor of not doing so? Yeah, okay, we'll roll call. Okay.
So just a second, say that, say that one more time. The motion will.
You have a motion by Hughes to not add the CSR rating to.
Let's be clear to the commission, right, is that it's a recommendation to the.
Recommendation to the board of supervisors, yes.
CSR not be.
We have a recommendation.
Wouldn't, it wouldn't be a final decision. It's just a recommendation we pass on the board of supervisors.
Planning commission only makes recommendations either for or against. The final decision on the activities that come out of it always comes back to the board of supervisors. So even if it's, you can have, you can have a recommendation for, for an ordinance change. And that, that thing goes on to the board of supervisors where the board of supervisors says, no, we don't want it. And then if they spot it at that point in time. Or you could, you could send up, the planning commission would send forth a recommendation of, hey, we don't want to do this, and it gets the board of supervisors and. It's something that they choose to do, whatever race topic, so. They, and they could very well reach back down and say, well, CSR isn't amendable, then maybe it is zoning.
And I'd also make a comment too, that some of the people that have made investments in the county. You know, I, I really think this gets open to some fairly decent-sized litigation. So we're trying to. Remember what they do with, with the piece of ground that they purchased, which, which was the ordinance that we passed? And now we're telling them, now you can't.
Alan, what are you saying about litigations? Open, that would be available now?
I think it's possible.
There's potentials where projects are far enough along under certain. There's potentials where projects are far enough along, under certain org, under ordinances. And then if jurisdictions go and change those ordinances where it could be potentially viewed as you're, as a. Trying to kill a project that those were, that those companies in petition boards to say, hey, you were just far along. We should be allowed to continue on. And you're originally, they'll come to the county and request, and then if, you know, if we say no, you gotta go to the ordinance. So then they'll, they'll go in petition courts for it and uh, then if the county attorney, whoever hired attorney, they have to litigate that. For us to determine what ordinance would that project fall under. Most of the times, you know, depending if they're far enough along, and they do get to go back to operate every day of the year.
Vote.
Larson.
Yes.
Gru.
Nay.
Martin.
Yay.
Christensen.
Yay.
Jameson.
Yay.
Hughes.
Yay.
Brad.
Yay.
This is just our recommendation going.
Yeah, we'll move this, so next steps, so we're ready and the public is aware, we will move this uh up to the board of supervisors. And uh that will be in approximately thirty days, that gets to the board of supervisors level. And the board of supervisors will hold a meeting on it on their Tuesday meetings. Now, their agendas are published online and on the website, our girls are communicating now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Once and proves the minutes from the previous meeting for us.
Oh, okay, uh do we have a motion to approve the minutes from the previous meeting?
I'll make a motion.
A motion by.
Go second by, a second. Yeah, second person, all those in favor, say aye. Okay. Now we're on to other business, uh future meetings.
Well, next meeting, now we have to be major. And we do have a case for make, it's a rezoning, and uh. Just one case right now, rezoning a property, uh Highway two thirty-five. Rezoning requests. Just north of David on two seventy-five.
Okay, we're up to the meeting to be on the third of the year, do we have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion.